It's seven o'clock, I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice or honor.
Sue, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Motion for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
That's all right.
Any discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda? Okay?
Not yet.
I've never been to a meeting before, so I'm not.
Oh, you guys just come up to the podium there and name an address and then.
And don't lie in the home.
Off you go.
You give that humming sound to all the new people.
Okay, I've never been to a meeting before, so, but I was put on the agenda. So I, I don't know. My name is Sheeney Green. I live at Conservation Trail. And when I came down to pay my taxes on the 25th of August, I spoke to some of the girls downstairs because I noticed there's some holes that have been drilled in my siding by the city because they moved the electrical. And I don't know why they moved it, when they moved it, and why they put, you know, the holes are in my siding, and seven pieces of my siding. And so they told me, the girls downstairs said I needed to contact Cody. So Cody called me that day. He came out and looked at it, but he has, he does the water. So anyway, he said he would give my phone number to the right people and they would contact me. No one ever called. So last Monday, I came back down, and, or actually, I called Cody, and he said I needed to speak with Dan. So he said he would give Dan my phone number because he was in a meeting that day. And, but Dan never called. So then I came back down to talk to the girls, and one of those said, I said, well, Dan never called me, and she said, Dan is in charge of everything. That's exactly how she said it. She said, he's a very busy man. He will return your call. Well, he never did. So what I'm here for is I want to know, we have the siding. We have extra siding at the condo. I would like to know who you're going to have come and put it up.
So what meter was it that got moved?
Pardon me?
Which meter?
I guess it was the electrical meter.
Was it the small little electric meter for the AMI?
Well, actually, they moved the whole thing because it wasn't right next to my bedroom window. And now it is. So there's a big green box, and then there's another seven meters come down like this. And I don't know when it was moved, why it was moved. And I went around to the other condos because there's four other condos there that have meters because each one that are on the end have all the electricity and everything, and the water is there. And I went around to all the other condos, and none of the other condos had anything moved. But Cody then told me that it had been moved, and he said, but, you know, the holes are about the size of a screw. But he said, well, you know, think of it this way. We did fill it with silicone. Okay, you filled it with silicone, but the holes are still there. I brought pictures.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Just like from Perry Beecham, Chairman of the Board of Lowell Light and Power, so it's electric. What was your address again?
2015 Conservation Trail.
And that's?
The condos right behind Tractor 75.
Okay.
And maybe the meters that they put up, now the meter is actually correct.
Yeah, so I'm General Manager of Light and Power. I don't have any answers for you right now, but this is the first that the message is that I'm aware of the message getting to Light and Power. So found the right people, as long as it's electric related. But if I can get your contact information outside of the meeting, I will make sure to reach out with you. Reach out to you tomorrow, and we will start finding a resolution.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So it's not the water meter?
No, it's electrical.
Another sample.
Is that? I got it with the light.
Yeah.
Perry, Perry.
Kind of a trigger.
Just hold your light down there and put your hand.
Just turn that one off.
Yeah, just turn it off.
Did it put the light on?
Alan. Yeah.
Yeah.
Please, Leah.
Of course.
Here we have this problem I thought you'd commission.
It's a smaller. Usually it's Suzie's.
It's usually over there.
Yeah.
Two chunks.
I'm wondering why. All favorables.
Just turn it on. It's going to drive me through yours.
I can.
Is it still not?
I don't know.
Yeah. Andy says you can run it here. Yeah, you feel better, please? Okay. Old Business, no ready. Thanks, Sue. KDL Annual Report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Oliver. I am the local representative for the board, for KDL Board of Trustees. I represent City of Lowell, Township of Lowell, Bridgeens Township, and Bone Township. I've been doing this for three years now, and I can continue to say this is one of my favorite things I get to do. Actually, very sad because I will be leaving at the end of this year, out of the area, and so I can no longer have this lovely position on the board. But it has been an absolute highlight of my life to get to do this. One of the things I wanted to highlight is last week, we had our Literary Libations, which is our annual gala. And we had four authors. One of those authors, I graduated from Lowell High School with in 2004. It was Christopher Cosmos, who wrote a book, Once We Were Here, about World War II in Greece. And he was not able to be able to be there because of COVID restrictions. But it was always, it was very exciting because I kept telling people, I'm going to die at school with him. I know him. So it was really exciting just to have a hometown shout-out at our annual gala. There has been a lot going on. We didn't get to do this presentation last year. So since it's been two years, we have a lot of updates. So I'm going to have to pass it off now to one of our members of our leadership team. This is Kurt Stevens. He is, I call him our IT guru, because he can fix anything that I write.
Thanks, Katie. And we have spoken a few times. Yes, thank you very much. As a representative of the leadership team at KDL, you know, your partnership, your, you know, it means a lot to us, you know, for the whole area. It is one of our, you know, it's like growing and energetic areas. We serve mostly because of Sandy and her team. She'll speak in a few moments. But, you know, to recap 2020, just for a little bit, without a doubt, you know, something none of us ever expected to see or understood would ever be there. Put a monkey wrench, to say the least, into all the typical things that happen in a library. So we had to rethink. We had to retool. We had to refocus. And we came up with quite a few ideas to be virtual, to continue to, you know, provide services to people in the house, you know, even as things as simple as, you know, reading to the children. We did it over the internet, just like everybody else was doing it over the internet. We actually came up with 1,400 livestream events over 2020 that we did for, you know, our patrons. The branch, you know, we, just like, you know, say Walmart and others did, the curbside system, we follow suit and would quickly, you know, put together the process to make sure that if you wanted a book to read, we would bring it out to you, put it in your trunk, put it in your backseat. And through that process, you know, we delivered just a smidge over 400,000 items to people to read, which is quite impressive, you know. So it was exciting for us to see that rolling the play. Your neighbor down the street, we opened the Ada branch, you know, this year. A lot of work was done last year during, you know, COVID, but, you know, that was a big part of what we've done, continued to add value. And for the focus, it's, you know, making sure that we just continue to look for ways to do meaningful things for our patrons. And with that, I'll let Sandy tell you about some more specifics.
So yeah, it's been quite a while since we've been here. You've had a couple of changes on your board. We've had some changes with our group as well here in Lowell. Stephanie Weaver retired a little bit over a year ago. She was wonderful in teaching technology. And Jess has kind of taken over for her. Lori Gerard, not your Lori Gerard, you know, it's kind of strange that, I think they even have the same middle initial. We had yours, we had ours, and she was marvelous at keeping us organized and everything where it was supposed to be. She retired just a couple of months ago to spend full time being a grandmother. And then just recently, Barb Jingles, who is the Assistant Manager, she retired. And we have someone new starting next week, who probably many of you know. Kurt Lardy is joining us at the Angel Heart Branch here. One of the things that makes me excited about him coming is he has been on the board of the museum. He's been on the board at Prong. He's been very active in the Lowell community for several years. So it's nice having somebody come in who is really invested in this community. As they both mentioned, COVID was a huge pivot for us. And like everybody around the world, we've had to adapt. We mentioned curbside, which was a huge benefit. Interesting enough, probably about two, three months before COVID hit the news, we had already started with curbside service here at Lowell. We were the first branch to try it. Our thought was, somebody's had knee or hip surgery, somebody's got three kids in a child seat that takes 20 minutes to unbuckle. We were going to reach out to them. And so one of the plus things about having everybody go to it, it got so much more efficient. The way we were doing it at first was a little bit clunky, but with all of KDL jumping in, very smooth. Of course, we couldn't do programming, not when we were shut down for only COVID. But even once we reopened the building, we still couldn't do COVID. So we started doing what we called our take and make. So rather than coming in for a program, we had a program in a bag for you to take home and do. Nice substitute, not the real thing, but it still kept us going. Earlier this summer, we started to do outdoor programming, which for us was storytime. We did the morning storytime outside on the west side of the library, so you were in the shade. And then our Tuesday evening storytime was done to the park just north of the building here. Once again, lots of shady trees, so the kids could be comfortable. We're doing it indoors again, so it doesn't matter, rain or shine, still just kids program. We haven't added adults yet. Hopefully with winter, we'll start off with that again. Our normal school outreaches, we couldn't do either. So those we were doing virtual. One of our staff still had her private YouTube channel that she had set up when she was in grad school. So we made use of that, reaching out to the schools, getting them able to do some storytimes there, hopefully some card sign-ups. Usually we bring in the first graders physically to visit the library every year. Show them what the library is about, send them home with an application to get one. And this year, we did it by the TV screen. Normally, we do several senior citizen visits to senior neighbors here, Green Acres, Fountain View. And of course, the first go-around with COVID, the seniors were the ones most at risk. So at that point, we weren't even allowed on the property. As things got a little more under control, we were doing drop-offs. Recently, we've been doing book discussions by phone. We're still not going into the building yet. And who knows? Hopefully sometime that will come. On the plus side, something we started during COVID that we'll definitely keep doing again. For several years, we've participated with chamber events, like Riverwalk and Harvest Festival. This last year and a half, we've gotten involved with the downtown merchants. We did the Chocolate Stroll. We did Get Lucky in Lowell. We started getting involved because of the market on me. We were trying to promote that in our building and letting people know what was going on. As I said, we couldn't gather in groups, but to keep these downtown merchants going, they were trying to have all these small events, so we were trying to do as much as we could to partner and promote those. And that we will definitely still want to keep doing. Visitors in the building, our statistics are down. They're coming back, but they're still down from what we had in 2019. Something that is interesting, as part of our strategic plan, we're working really hard at our displays and our merchandising materials, trying to build the physical circulation back on. As Kurt mentioned, our digital circulation exploded in all this. But we've been working on the physical circulation. Alantho, one of our staff here, is on the committee that's helping design this. And the Lowell branch, for about 12 weeks now, has been circulating more books now than we did in 2019. So the circulation has really taken off. I said, close with some stories. I'll just give you one, one short one, so I don't take up too much of your time. If any of you have well-trained dogs, you know, you can tell them to stay, put a treat in front of them, and they stay there, and you can almost see the muscles quiver until you say, okay, and then they go for the treat. When we started curbside, we would have people have their trunks or their back doors open, and we would distribute the materials that way. When this first started, there were several times, both here and in Elto, that I would be putting bags of books in the back of a van, and there were kids there. And you could almost see their muscles quiver, just waiting to pounce on those books as soon as I let go. So hopefully, next time I see you, we'll be beyond this and a little bit back to normal. But in the meantime, we're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy, I do want to thank you for coming to Coffee with the Council and bringing the treats and attending that and just keep us informed what's happening on the monthly.
That works well for me because I try to visit Bone Township, Lowell, Bridgeens, and Grattan Townships. And except for Grattan, it's all the third Monday of the month. So Coffee with the Council works well for me.
Sandy, I'd like to thank you too. When, during COVID, we decided, I got asked to put on the Drive-In movie of the game being played up there. And we literally had hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment we were using. And it all relied on, what did we get? Three?
A hotspot, yep.
Three little tiny little hotspots made everything work fine, and that was near the height. And Sandy made sure we had them, and more importantly, she made sure we knew how to use them.
Yeah, we're here to partner with you whenever we can, so thank you.
And she does bring us donuts.
But I think I missed her on Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
I was told you didn't eat Labor Day.
We did, we did not.
Or was it the month before?
It was the month before I had my knee replaced.
Excuses, excuses.
Why don't you skip rope now? And then it works.
I have to keep, just in case, donuts for Perry. Line Shack proposal is the next item, ma'am. Charlie and Perry and Fred are here.
All right.
From Light and Power.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you all are aware, I've been working closely with the city manager on issuing and processing and requesting proposals for the sale and development of the property across the river at 115 Riverside Drive, commonly referred to as the Line Shack. Following city council guidance, the RFP was issued in early June. We provided approximately 10 weeks from the time of initial publishing of the RFP to the due date, which was August 20th. Essentially, the RFP was the same RFP that was used last year for the same process with two material changes. One was the addition of $100,000 minimum offer based on a fair market value assessment that we had conducted prior to issuing the RFP. And the second one, the second change was the addition of residential development as a desired use for that property. So all in all, we ended up receiving six proposals, all six of which met the $100,000 minimum, and all were received prior to the due date. You have provided city manager with a copy of all proposals. I believe he's distributed them all to Mayor and rest of the council. But at the Lowell Light and Power Board meeting on September 16th, the Light and Power Board evaluated and discussed all the proposals. We provided a dedicated time period for each proposal to be evaluated, and then provided anybody interested or the submitter of the proposal to a five-minute time call, or a five-minute window to answer any questions or providing additional details that they felt were pertinent. At the meeting, we heard from Ms. Emos, that's twice now, I probably butchered her name, I'm sorry, representing Shabby Sheep Nanigans, Mr. Parkus representing Parkus Engineering, Mr. Shaw representing his own proposal, and Mr. Dean representing the Edge LLC. There were no representatives from the Anti-Social Social Club or BGR Investments. During the discussion, after, or after an evaluation of each proposal, the Light and Power Board shifted their focus on determining what extent and scope they wanted to deliver a recommendation or guidance to city council. Ultimately, the Light and Power Board decided not to take any official action, but did want to provide the following commentary on the Line Shack proposals. The Light and Power Board recommends that city council consider all proposals that have been submitted. The Light and Power Board would recommend that city council evaluate all proposals for consistency with the RFP requirements, as there was some discussion regarding the completeness of some of those proposals. At the end of the day, the Light and Power, the Light and Power Board acknowledged that the decision-making process is going to involve consideration of a multitude of factors. And the consensus from the Light and Power Board was that it would be inappropriate and ineffective to try and weigh each of the various components that go into it. There's a lot that you all have to consider, obviously. So the Light and Power Board focused on a fairly minimal scope of evaluation, avoiding providing commentary on the criteria that fall outside of the purview of the Light and Power Board and the authority of that board. With a limited scope of evaluation, the Light and Power Board find the proposals submitted by Ms. Emos and Parkus Engineering to be the most attractive. The Light and Power Board acknowledges that this is heavily reliant on the offer price. The Light and Power Board also went on to acknowledge that the $18,000 differential between the low bid and the high bid, while it's not insignificant, is not material to the overall financial stability of Light and Power. So with that being said, the Light and Power Board acknowledged that city council has a much broader scope of evaluation that could ultimately result in another proposal being selected by council. The request of the Light and Power Board is that in the event that a lower bid or not one of the complete high bids is selected, that the board consider and ensure that the benefits associated with selecting that proposal outweigh the reduction in the offer price. With that, that's everything that I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Salzweedle was there for the conversation and can also, I'm sure, shed some, shed some light on the process if there's any questions.
So the discussion between Mike and I was to have same kind of setup they had, where we have all the pre-poldwood packets come in and present them to council because it's the only way to see what's in them. You can read through them, but it's way better to have the people here to answer questions. So we're looking at a non-council meeting Monday to do that. The only conflict I think would be with you, you could likely follow a plan Monday. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'll be here for that. Steer the ship.
Yeah. I can, we can do this starting like at 1:00. I know what Leah does on Mondays, but I could start earlier and someone would not interfere with any commission.
That was the other thing Mike and I talked about, because you don't want to cut, if you have all six people show up, you don't want to cut it short and have to be out of here by date.
You know what? I think Lowell Light and Power did a good job of maybe 30 minutes per. Maybe something a little longer, a little less. It even depends on if they even get representation here. So those could go much quicker, you know, to make that determination. So we gave a half hour each, that's three hours, maybe for four or a block, or five, something like that.
Discussion was, the discussion was October 11th. So then you're not telling people, hey, you have to be here next Monday, six days from now, and be ready to present. So that's, you know, off council Monday, and it's three weeks away.
There's quite a few many audience tonight. Anybody opposed to coming back for that, that are here tonight? I see one, two, three, four of them, I think.
Yeah. My thoughts, my experience with doing these projects like this is the best way probably is to have them do their proposal, basically identify what it is they want to do, and then go from there, set questions for all of the different entities, done based on previous development projects. And from there, I think it's really, you know, there's, you don't have to, this isn't like a, an hour, you know, a bid where you have to take the lowest bid or the highest, sale. Really, it's the one that you think fits best for that property, that side of the river.
Whole downtown.
The whole downtown. I mean, it could be, you know, it's really your decision. It's, you know, is there, is there a need for residential?
Yes.
There's been a lot of residential last couple of years, so maybe that's not a need. I don't know. That's really your decision. The other options is, you know, there's other options. There's a lot of retail. There's always a need for more retail in downtown. And restaurants, I mean, you have different options. So it's really the one that you see the most suitable for, for that, for that area and the downtown.
One of the Lowell Light and Power Board members talked about the master plan and how that also fits in too, so we can look at what that has been planned, and that hasn't been allowed since that has been updated. But I have brought up several times as far as making sure it fits into that as well.
Yeah, and I've looked, I've taken a look at the master plan last couple of days. I think any one of these fits in it, in my opinion. And you got to remember, it's a guideline, it's not a doctrine.
Right.
Any other questions for Charlie or Perry or Craig or Jim?
So I'll set it up. If you would like, I'll set it up. Decide the time of the developers. What time are we thinking of starting?
I mean, I can get out of work anytime, whatever. I mean, it's up to you guys. I can.
It's enough in advance where I can get the afternoon off.
If I do noon, if I start at noon, would that work or?
Well, you're going to do a half hour and an hour and a half.
I think you need an hour. I think you need an hour. I think it's still in Paris, right?
An hour per?
Hour per, yes. You're probably going to get, you're probably going to get them through in 45 minutes, but my experience has been you're better off just giving each of them an hour.
Can we start at 1:00 so I can get?
Whatever you want to do.
What is mine?
The later the better. I understand. 1:00 AM, ridiculous. So we could probably, I mean, if all six show up, we'll still be, give plenty of time for planning to get in and do their thing. Makes it an all-day thing for you, but.
Hi, Eric Parkus. I'm one of the proposals. And there's been a number of discussions with different people in the issue of parking. Always comes up in this, in this issue, and I know it's going to be discussed at length because of the new restaurants and the different activities. Often, you have the Williams and works do a parking study, a traffic study. Is that, is anything like that needed for you to make a fair evaluation? Because what I'm proposing takes so many cars, and residential takes so many cars, that sort of thing. Are we, are we going to have enough of that information for you at that meeting?
That's a good question.
It is a question. Easy to engineer.
Why, no, I understand. Parkus.
Yeah, I'd like to look into that a little bit more. I really haven't taken that into account.
The other thing that, that was brought up too is, is how soon can they start? What permits? What's, all that stuff needs to be done. And to be fair in the state, they were asking that question at Lowell Light and Power directed to us. And so those are some questions that we may need to answer as well. Well, what does that look like? Because there were some, we need to turn this around. There were some easy starts, quicker starts. Some were longer, some were.
If uniform questions that we need to reach one to.
Those are some things that were asked, which we couldn't. Exactly, so those are some things that we're asking, which we could not answer.
Because I think, Charlie, aren't you looking at getting your employees to park around on that spat pad, get them off the side so they can open up?
We don't think that we'll be able to get, we know we won't be able to get everybody, but yeah, the goal is to look at how can we lay out that space to maximize a few extra spots, to at least get some off the street there, to freedom of parking, knowing that there's going to be an increased need right in the area.
So, again, I just would ask that we look into the parking issue and see which, the proposals, what, when they need the parking and at what times, how many, so that we can, you can better make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
That should be pretty easy, because we got, basically, we got the two big city parks around here, we got parking.
Yeah, I mean, previous to downtown as a whole, I believe, counted it last year. There's a, there's a lot of parking spaces in the downtown. If you include the on-street parking, the problem is you got to walk, but what downtown do you not walk in? People think it's parking problem if they can't pull up to the building they want to go to. You go to downtown Birmingham, or you go to downtown Ann Arbor, you're not parking, you're finding a spot where you find a spot, so.
All right, so when we do that, city staff can coordinate the time with the proposals?
October 11th.
October 11th. Let's go with that. Any other questions on the line?
Mayor, I was just going to say, at 11, if you were to make a decision on the 11, that would give you that 20 days buffer, just barely, to make a decision, because when you sell real estate, your charter adds some extra procedural steps to the mix. One being that four city council members have to approve the sale, and the other one being that you would make a resolution as to who you would choose and at what price, then 20 days have to go by where it will sit in the clerk's office for public inspection, and then it comes back sometime after that.
So, you probably won't even be able to draft a resolution, the resolution would have to come through the next council meeting for it to sit 20 days, correct?
I mean, we could have a resolution ready if a decision were made, then we could fill the blank.
Fill the blank.
Basically, we have to have one meeting, and then 20 days will go by to your next November 1st meeting.
Okay.
So, just, just let you know, they have that in the back of your head.
Okay.
That it's not immediate, so.
Anything else on the line? Dan, your turn. Hillside Court.
Need the mayor and council. After a meeting on September 7th, I contacted Great Lakes Paving to pay the quote for them to pave the turnaround area at the West End of Hillside Court. I met with Mr. John Allen from Great Lakes Paving on site, and we discussed the best way to approach this paving work. The area to be paved is approximately 1,600 square feet and includes a portion along the street as to help improve the current drainage. It'll help improve it, but it won't take care of all of it. The BPW crew can lower the current gravel area down approximately two and a half inches and slope it properly to allow for the asphalt to be placed. According to Mr. Allen, if we were to do that, he's anticipating using approximately 26 tons of asphalt to cover the area laid out for surfacing, although this amount could vary depending on accurate BPW is that giving that area prep. It's my recommendation that we approve the quote from Great Lakes Paving for the paving of the turnaround area at the West End Hillside Court as outlined in the quote in September 12, for a cost of $3,980.
When, when can you do it, like as ASAP kind of thing?
He'll work with us as ASAP, because like I said, we'll prep it, it's going to take us some time to do that, right? I mean, that's not something we do every day, but we can do it and fit it into what we're doing, whether he's got going and the weather. He's pretty confident we can get it done before the end of the season.
Cool. Any feedback from any of the residents up there, Dan? Go. Nothing?
No more than what I've gotten in the past that we've already discussed. I remembered them being amenable to that.
Yeah, 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 I didn't know.
Just making sure.
That comes in a little lower than you thought, too. What did BPW do in their work? Motion for the Great Lakes Paving Board. How to make that motion?
Support.
More questions for Dan? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Dan, next, Wolverine Power easement on Ware Road.
Wolverine Power Supply Co. has a transmission line that runs across the city-owned Ware Road property. Back in 1967, the city and Wolverine Electric Co., now known as Wolverine Power, entered into an agreement to allow Wolverine a right-of-way easement for the transmission line. This transmission line has been in service for about 54 years. As approached by Mr. Greg Gibson, who's the land agent for Wolverine Power, he explained that the 1967 easement encumbers an entire city-owned property, and today Wolverine Electric would like to reaffirm, Wolverine Power, I'm sorry, would like to confirm, reaffirm and amend the easement to only include a specifically the 100-foot wide easement for the power lines and releasing any remaining encumbrances. The power line will continue to be centered on the easement with 50 feet being on each side of the power line. In return for amending the easement, the city would receive approximately $285. The payment is based on a formula that takes into account footage, polls, and other amenities. There's an easement map included. I have attached a copy of the original and the amended agreement so you can see how they compare. The new agreement specifically releases any rights Wolverine Power may have had on lands outside of the easement area, that's item number five. It restricts the construction of any structures or obstructions within the easement strip without permission of Wolverine Power, that's item seven, and any damage caused by Wolverine Power due to the work of theirs on the power lines and accessing through the easement roads, existing easement roads, will, shall be repaired at the cost of Wolverine Power. Again, the rest of the two agreements, they're pretty much side by side. It should be noted that the amended agreement is a typical agreement utilized by Wolverine Power, boilerplate if you will. If the amended easement agreement is approved by the city, then Wolverine Power will take that one that you see in the packet, and then they'll make sure all the dates and times and names and everything are on there proper, right ahead, and return it back to the city for signature.
All right, any questions for Dan? Turn down 285,000.
Oh, buy half a ton of ashes.
Yeah, motion to approve the right-of-way easement with Wolverine Power. Make that motion. Any more questions for Dan?
And authorize the mayor to.
authorize the mayor to.
Yeah. Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Boarding Commission reports, Cliff.
Went to Lowell Lake Power Board, other than the Line Shack, did a lot of good topics. First thing, I was entertained by the island mode opportunity that was presented to the board. Is it feasible? Yes. Is it affordable? No. So, worked a great job, I think, of putting that on hold. Now, island mode is where if one of the main power transmission lines went down, we would be able to power off the generators, gas generators we have today. And based on what we have, it just can't happen. But there is a way to do it, but it can be costly. So, my hats off to the board for taking into consideration as rate payers when it comes to doing those types of things and keeping it steady, and just a lot of other good conversation they had on the Line Shack, so thank you much.
Can I just say, but our generators are still.
Sure, yes.
Operational, they're still, we still use them, they're still create power, it's just to go island mode, we wouldn't have, those would not be enough to do it.
Huge benefit, yes. And I'm going to let Leah talk about our reports.
Marty?
We have planning commission. One of the recreational marijuana places came in looking for a special land use permit and did not receive the special land use permit. So, we'll wait and see how that all transpired, but as of right now, they're stopped in their tracks. That's it.
I've got Chamber of Commerce. I'll share some of the goals that we discussed last meeting. We'll create and establish the 501(c)(3) that will encompass and manage the operations of the Lowell Showboat, so we're working, we're working on that still. And we really, safely, we want to help the community navigate backwards, normal organizing events, getting back to traditional chamber events. We are all very anxious to see what the next year brings for the chamber. And Arbor Board, we discussed, every year for the Arbor Day celebration, we choose a business in town that receives a tree, so we are still looking for the 2020 tree, 2021 tree, and then we're planning ahead for the 2022 tree. Anything else?
No, just Lowell Lake Power was there to discuss trivia rules, give you permission instead of getting chest, I would like it done in the past, they're being forefront. Perry's also on that, so it brings great insight to that, and Ryan was there, so I'll get another, that you can never, I would say, they're involved in keeping the community informed.
Excellent.
Good. Vision was last Wednesday, right, or Thursday? Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Last Wednesday, so remind to everybody, community cleanup is Saturday morning, the Still looking for three volunteers to help my son and I with parking and traffic control, so if you're interested in doing that, there's usually donuts at the end, Perry.
How about the obese?
I just don't want you to show up if there's no donuts.
You're going to have my Kickstarter?
I'll get your Kickstarter if you come up now. I'll even get you a vest that says Chamber on the back.
Correct.
And I'll tell the community cleanup, we didn't really cover anything else. Any questions or discussion or updates on the budget reports?
The only thing at this point that's really been off-kilter is just the number of emergency repairs we've had to make for air conditioning to this building and the library. Yeah.
I see us in the very near future, taking a good, long, hard look at these buildings and figuring out what it's going to cost to just overhaul it and replace it. More importantly, we have to figure out where those dollars are going to be coming from, and I don't want to take it out of streets if we don't have to, but we need to keep the library up and running every day.
I think you're going to have to, it's, it's, that's, that's, the good thing is you got two years on the library, next year's this building, so. Been talking to Paul from Progressive, this building next year needs to overhaul, it won't make it. It's looking towards the end of summer.
The library has been for two years.
From what Paul told me is that you probably could go two years before having to overhaul the DAC in that building. Basically, the issue with that building is the way it's configured, the way that building was designed, it's configured very difficult for them to get through, so it's going to be more costly when they do the overhaul. The issue with, really with this building is, is that we're replacing compressors and we're filling it with refrigerant that is not being made anymore, and it's like, just to get the refrigerants, like $4,000 every time. And so, you could basically be spending $40,000 a year, every year in eternity, or just do the overhaul, which is probably, you know, estimated anywhere between $105,000, $120,000.
Well, I know you will look at all three ways to come up with funding, whether it's stimulus money, marijuana money, and stuff like that, but I'm quite sure you'll come up with something.
I'll figure it out.
Well, the discussion needs to happen too, we've all been presented with the numbers and the reports.
Right.
The discussion has to happen too about the townships chipping in on that library, because it's not just city residents who use it, and, I mean, the numbers are there, you can see who's coming from where and who's using it, so.
But is there, or should I save this question for when we're discussing? I mean, it's, it's my understanding that the entity that has the building, is there any way around that that you can ask them? So, we're basically going to ask them?
You can ask, but they have no legal obligation.
Okay, thanks.
But I would think, you know, Lowell Township came on and said, you know, you guys want to do the trails, we'll pitch in, you pitch in. So, I think the, Lowell Township especially, I think, is over the last, we were talking about this today, I think I've been up here five years, we've more and more and more became right, working together, and I would hope that townships would kick in, because when you look at the numbers, there's quite a few people in their township, so it's not like the numbers are off-kilter.
Forty percent us, thirty and thirty.
Yeah, but like everything, it doesn't hurt to ask, and the worst they're going to say is no.
And at the end of the day, we're going to take care of the library.
It's because Sandy brings donuts.
Except in August, that's what I heard.
My knee was replaced in July, I couldn't drive in August.
Any other discussion on the budgets? Monthly reports? Mike, city manager.
Just a couple of things, tentatively setting a little better date for, was it Monday, December 13?
December 13, yeah.
At 6:00 PM?
He'll be here by 5:00, so we have 5:30.
5:30, okay. We'll, we'll wait, once we have more information on that, we'll let you know. Obviously, you obviously were the library and the city hall issues. Only other thing is, obviously, next council meeting, I'll be phoning in as I'll be at the city managers conference. Other than that, it's really just relatively, oh, been trying to meet with Township about the administrative consent orders, we had a meeting scheduled for last week. Unfortunately, their attorney needed to take, need a little more time to look at the agreements, and then we're probably going to try and set it up hopefully next week, so that's all I got.
Questions for Mike?
What's the status of the bathrooms at the?
I believe the permit's been issued, and I know they were doing some demo work, but they are, their plan is, is to get it done before the winter, so. I know it took them a little while to get the permit, but.
They need some software.
There was some software, yes, yeah.
Okay, nothing in appointments? Council comments? Marty?
I'd like to thank everybody that put their bid in on that Line Shack building, whoever gets it. I own the building right there, and I would say that somebody already there, they know what the neighborhood's like, and if somebody knew, well, then welcome to our neighborhood.
Get a learn quick.
And, yeah, that's it.
Okay, Cliff?
I'd like to thank the Lowell Lake Power Board for making our job more difficult by passing it along.
You know that's Perry's.
I'm going to beg you different, it was some other, other board members that really expressed it after two and a half hours, sitting there and listening and making sure that all of their, their thoughts are heard. That's my job, present it to us, we mean, I have a pretty good sized list, so hopefully by October 11th, I will figure out what that list is, but I will do my best to support with the council and with Lowell Lake Power.
With the sarcasm button off, I think it's great that we had six people interested enough, and it speaks well for what's going on in Lowell, I think. But I think it's going to be tough. Not looking forward to it.
And let's say, go pack, go pack, right?
You can't say that.
You can just do that.
This meeting is recorded.
I'll say it for you, go pack.
That's a team owner.